It's an interesting ward. It's very, I would say it's a pretty diverse ward in terms of, you know, the southern side is debt near farms. And then it crosses over Lincoln Highway and it picks up NNU. So it's all of NNU west of Annie Glidden. And then carries on through up to Northern progress to all the apartment buildings. So we have single-family homes, university student housing. And then the Fortis Drive area, there's again, single-family homes and then multifamily residential. A little slice of retail on the north side.
A little slice of retail. You've been on the council for a while. What would be your three top things you'd like to comp?
You know, they've all been said. I think, you know, people do recognize there is a, obviously, there's some looming challenges that the city has in terms of the infrastructure, in terms of the pensions. We have challenges with economic development and, you know, attracting businesses to DeKalb. And then, you know, again, making, I think, there's still a little bit of a challenge in making DeKalb attractive to attract the people coming here. So several challenges. I really am focusing, and I have been focusing a little bit on the economic development. I tried to, I contacted Aldi, I know some people at Aldi, so I contacted them about, when David went to North, he talked about putting in a, you know, having it no longer be a food desert, getting a small grocery store or something in the area. We already do have some grocery stores along progress there, but I went to Aldi to see if they would be, you know, consider a micro store or something like that in the area. It didn't work out, but I'm always looking for opportunities to, you know, attract additional businesses in DeKalb.
Are there any questions in the audience for, David?
Hello. Very similar question to Scott. Obviously, being in the throes of it, you've had a little bit more experience to understand some of the goings on and certainly in the Echo Park neighborhood that you mentioned. Obviously, with some of the first floor properties that have been generally contained there for the last probably four to five years now migrating over into the second floor. What is your thought on continuing to create multifamily units in the city of DeKalb for the sake of economic growth?
So, you know, as we look at the multifamily residential that's up in that area, again, you go back and look at what was done in the past, you can't change what we've done. But when you look at, those were built specifically as student housing. So we don't have parks. You know, there wasn't an expectation that there would be families living in the area needing to park cars. There would be students that would be walking to NNU. And so additional development in the area is going to require potentially, you know, additional building and parking lots, potentially taking down buildings, creating parking space or green space where we have parks in the area for children to play, things like that. One of the things the city did to mitigate some of the crime that goes on was the parking regulations. I stood up for the Fortis Drive subdivision that they had their own parking restrictions already in place that were satisfactory to everyone within the subdivision. They didn't feel like there were students coming in and parking their day places. So instead of applying the city's regulations, I was thankful to have the rest of the aldermen vote in support of keeping the regulations.
Are there any other questions? I think on Monday night's council meeting, we're seeing more and more common sense happening in the council members, addressing issues on a more realistic base. Tony said something on Monday that I kind of applauded. One of the complaints was somebody who were going to build a convention, actually for the Egyptian Theater. And somebody was complaining it was going to block their view. And how did you respond?
So, you know, I responded with the story of when we built our home, we had, we were told that, you know, the property next to us wouldn't be developed or till the rest of the subdivision was filled out. The lesson I learned from that is about a year, six months, a year later, they built a house right next to us. You can't control the view of, you know, I can look out on a, you know, across the alleyway or I can look across the pod or whatever, but if I don't purchase that property, I have no rights to it. If that's not my property, that's somebody else's property, it's going to become developed. I, I'll stop there.
Well, and, and I was quite all right. And I think it's common sense. You know, it's the old cliche, well, there's a lot of airplane noise around, why don't this be home in Elkhorn Village? That is right by the airport. You're going to have airport noise and the same thing that you spoke of. And we see it in Chicago all the time when they build a high-rise. I've got a great view of Lake Michigan and somebody builds a higher high-rise in front of me and then somebody does a higher high-rise. Well, that's the way it works. But I applaud you for being kind of somewhat realistic and I'm sorry if another person felt bad, but that's reality and we have to face that. We're going to wrap up some questions here and Bessie brought a very good point up. We have, one of these two, I ran with her and she brought a very good point. How much time, you know how much time it takes to be the alderman? You, I know Steve, you were at one time. You realize the, what you have to do and the preparation and I have, Dave and I talk a lot of time about how much he has on his computer just reading over and understanding stuff before it happens. So I'm going to throw some information out for each of you to answer, just to see where we're at. No, it's not a right or wrong, you're not going to fail. We'll start with Carolyn. In 2015, how many of your homes were built in the city of DeKalb? New occupied homes?
Fifty.
Fifty?
It's a guess. I'm playing, playing along.
Whatever you want to say. Steve, you don't have to have a fight.
I think maybe two.
Okay.
2015, I don't think there were any.
Okay.
I agree. When Susanna ran for clerk, there was a meeting and they talked about there had been a hundred and some odd buildings built, homes built in Sycamore and zero built.
Zero? In 2015, there were minus ten homes in the city of DeKalb. There were fifteen destroyed and five built. So we were minus ten to start. Carolyn, in 2016, how many?
Minus twenty.
They have small numbers.
Yeah, and they are. And there's a point under there. There was one house built in 2016. In 2017, there were two built. We cannot grow our economic base on that slow of a progress.
Somebody in 2018?
Pardon? It did go up in eighteen.
2018.
2018. Now, here's the problem. It says twenty-three, but those are not occupied houses.
They're for sale.
They're for sale. They are not occupied. So right now, we, I did my research this morning before I, if I went to be a moderator, you were about to yell at me, I did my research. There were four of those homes that were occupied out of the twenty-three. So these are things that, you know, we have to be aware of because it's a whole encompassing. It's not just our personal attitude, our personal desires, or what we like to see or not see. Starting again, we'll start over here with Tony on this question. What is the income per capita for the city of DeKalb? Per person, what's the income? Your average income?
I believe the number is at least thirty-eight thousand, roughly thirty-eight to forty-two thousand.
I think I read nineteen thousand.
Okay.
I just read this up there. I want to think it's like twenty-six thousand.
I'm mixing up numbers between per capita and household, so I'm not sure.
And you will. Carolyn?
I thought I read the average household income was around forty-nine thousand, but I guess it's different.
Okay. Per capita, per person, I think it's twenty thousand, one hundred dollars. Per person. Twenty thousand, one hundred dollars. In Sycamore, it's thirty-one thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars.
I also read the fifth floor has the lowest per capita income on all.
Yeah, and you're correct. I didn't break it down that far. In relationship to median household income, you were correct, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars. Average is thirty-six thousand. Folks, that doesn't pay a lot of bills, you know, and when the last election, some crazy guy ran for mayor and challenged John Ray, and John kept saying, well, I'm M-13. And I said, John, those are only paying fifteen dollars an hour and that's only thirty-six thousand dollars a year. You can't live on thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Median income in Sycamore is sixty-seven thousand. We have some problems and we have to address these. We have to know these answers, we have to know these issues. And again, there's no right or wrong. I'm doing this for a reason. How many, what percent of homes sold in Sycamore are sold to DeKalb people, Carolyn?
I would venture to guess a lot because the schools are attractive.
Okay. Steve?
I don't know what the percentage is, but I know there is, there is some movement in that direction.
Okay.
I think it's twenty percent.
Okay.
It's around twenty, twenty-five percent.
High above the optimistic.
Forty-two percent of all homes sold in Sycamore, no, are sold to DeKalb people. And these lead to reasons why we have to address these issues. These are financial issues. If you talk to a realtor and they won't, they don't want their name, but they will tell you, the biggest comment they get from a potential resident will be, DeKalb is, I don't like your schools.
I don't like your schools.
Well, we have to deal with it.
Yeah, we got to fix it.
So these are things, and I hope this can help a little bit, and I'm trying to let them know that there's a lot more that goes on. And we've covered such small percentages of it. You know, we have to, we have to understand these figures. We have to understand what it's going to do to grow our community, you know? You talk about, one of you talked about more student property, you know, more student dorm rooms, you know? How many dorm rooms do we have empty in Northern Illinois University?
I think we have a couple towers empty, don't we?
There's seven hundred empty dorm rooms in Northern Illinois University. Seven hundred empty. And that's not a realist, by the way, statistics-wise, and my readers use statistics, by the way, that's not a true figure because what they've done is gone from two people in the dorm room to one person in the dorm room. And we still have seven hundred empty seats. So these are things that we have to look at, economics. And Bessie, did that answer your question? I mean...
Yeah, but I have more.
Well, please, please.
Okay. A couple of the, one question is specific to the alderman and the duties, but let me backtrack based on what it is that you're talking about right now. A lot of the questions that are being asked and a lot of the discussion, it's centering on the DeKalb City Council, but it's not only their problem. It's, we have the state to deal with and we have other entities within the community to deal with. If you look around the room, there, you can count on, well, there are very many people here. That is a huge issue of more people getting involved and of the various governmental entities talking with each other, the schools and the city and the county. You know, I've said this over and over and over and over again and it's still not happening. What can you do in your capacity as city council people to bring those kinds of discussions, to do the necessary visioning to uplift this community? What can you do as council to bring more discussion among the entities? Is that a factor?
So, yeah, I think it starts with the talks. And I think I was fortunate in my, I just went door knocking for two whole hours this campaign season. And I was fortunate to walk along Hillcrest and come across, I stopped at every business right there in that little strip on Hillcrest just off of Annie Glidden. And I bumped into just the second business from the end there. And they've got a fantastic thing going on. They've got, he's preparing taxes and he's got another, you know, one person's doing taxes and he's renting the space and managing the space. And then he's got another person doing taxes and he's got somebody else serving food there. And, you know, and so he and I sat down and had a talk for a little bit. And he's telling me about how he runs a prison ministry and, you know, and then I sat down with Dan Kenny of the DeKalb County Community Gardens. And I'm sitting down with these different entities in the community and recognizing that they're all doing a whole lot to really invest in my little ward and the whole city. And I can see, you know, from having, running a charity, a big portion of what is going to pull people out of poverty is a significant step in improving our community. And from extensive reading and research, it's mentorship, mentorship that does that. But you have to have people who have time to invest in that mentorship. And we've talked about it on different levels. If you're only making twenty thousand a year, you don't really have time to give much back to your community. So it is a lot of things and it's going to take a lot of people. And we're going to have to unite and support each other. And we're going to have to figure out how to pull these entities together. And, you know, so I was invited by this tax office to come over there and have my community meetings there, which is, it's a great location. But that's a good way to take a first step to trying to reach out in a, you know, new location and connect people. But, yeah, it's going to be a lot of work.
Do I also want to address that?
The answer to the question that Bessie's asking, I already know what answer she's seeking. What she wants to see is things like the JRV, where the different entities sit down and discuss matters and have open communication. I'm not sure that committees solve problems as much as Bessie does, but that definitely starts with that kind of communication. And it definitely starts with the discussions between the entities in an open forum and with honest communication.
Yes. Can I kind of piggyback off of Bessie's question? In regards to kind of making these partnerships specifically with our schools, five of our schools are either underperforming or lowest performing in the state rankings. My children, we live in the fifth floor, they go to Tyler, it's the lowest performing, it's ranked lowest performing. So I was just wondering, do you have ideas for partnerships with schools? And, you know, kind of how do you see that working within your wards and within the city?
I definitely do. And I think my ward is doing a little bit of it already and I'm really excited about the project they have. So New Hope Church off of Twombly, you know, has a plan and they've just gotten a grant from the community foundation for a hundred thousand dollars to implement this, you know, like a workout type center or like, but really what they're trying to do is give the kids a place to go after school. And we've got a lot of kids in the neighborhood who are after school, just put their thumbs with nothing to do, no after-school programs, no mentorship. And what I see that as, you know, having a location for them to go and having people for them to talk to who can help them with their homework and guide them and grow them and develop them into successful members of our community, that's what we need. And that's what, you know, they've got a vision for over there. That we also have people that I, you know, met through the, through the beloved dinners that are doing an after-school program for the school that my kids go to, I think Brooks, and they're hosting that over in University Village. But I think that that's exactly what we need. We need more people coming out to volunteer in these organizations, coming out to lead in these organizations. Sometimes it's easy to get, you know, volunteers who can do one hour here and there, but sometimes you just need a volunteer leader to organize the volunteers. And it doesn't have to be all that elaborate. But I think molding our youth into successful and contributing citizens is how we pull people out of poverty and how we, you know, take the first steps.
And I agree with that. And there's a lot of bad parenting going on that doesn't contribute to good students. And with the Brook School, in January, the third week in January, the police had to go and say, this is grade school, right? With the Brook, you go to grade school?
My kindergartner goes there.
Right. Thirteen young kids had a schoolyard fight. Thirteen young kids, they had to call the police on it. That's a problem. That's a problem we have to address in Europe. Maybe it's mentoring, maybe it's providing opportunities. I know the police department has a summer youth league. We've actually talked with the team hourly of creating a night basketball league for kids with police officers or community leaders who've been willing to do it. There has to be an initiative built. It has to come from someplace. We're all busy, there's no question. But with terms of our youth, we need to be more participatory and make sure that they have a better life. And we can't have these kind of problems. Yes, Bessie?
Yeah, I had enough to kind of build more for alderman duties. When you're elected, if you should be elected, would you be willing to serve as a council liaison to one of the boards and commissions that we have? We seem to have a gap there.
Absolutely.
It should be. It should be.
Well, when I was on the council before, I served as a liaison to the Economic Development Committee and then also as the liaison to the DSETs or the transportation organization. And that's very useful because it keeps you up to date on what's going on and not just filtered through a staff report. So that's important for council members to do.
Absolutely. Sure.
I mean, I've sat on only four, yeah, it's just, it takes more time, but you have to commit to it, I know. And it needs to be divided among all the council members. So there has to be, you know, some balance, if you will. Because there are a lot of committees. I think we're trying to cut back on the number...
Small boards and commissions that are established.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. Especially the boards that don't have a city staff member that are actually elected on those boards. Attention boards, for example. You can go to those meetings. Yeah, I would not be unopposed to at all.
I'm happy to report that every single meeting that I've gone to, I've seen either an alderman or the city manager. And I've gone to most of the boards because I wanted to become acquainted with what they do and how they work. So every, I believe that's something the cities are...
I volunteered to take the air for them.
Yay!
There's one other point that came to mind with regard to this. The special events committee that was discussed at the council meeting last night, the city manager seemed a little bit reluctant to go along with the creation of it. And my sense of it was, was his concern was there's more staff time involved. If they have, the more committees, commissions they have, the more staff time there is. And one possibility for some of the committees or commissions along those kind of lines would be for a volunteer to keep the minutes of those meetings rather than require that a staff person be there at every meeting.
Stevie, that's a very valid point. And we, as, you guys as a council member and in leadership with our community here, we have to learn from the past. Because the past will tell us how the future will go. You've got a very valid point. When Mayor Sparrow was the mayor, he had a special events committee made up of business members. There was no council members or no people and they reported to the city manager and the mayor. And they're all volunteers. So we can learn from the past. That has worked in the past. So we have to learn that, we have to grow with that. And that's the only way we're going to change. We've covered about basic everything. I make a couple more comments, or I'll make my last statement here, is we've dealt with the concerns. We know it's economics. We know it's crime. We know it's future growth. And we have to be conscious of things that we look at it. The median price of homes sold in DeKalb was a hundred twenty-eight thousand. Median price in Sycamore was a hundred sixty-seven thousand. We have some economic problems. This is what will make us aware of what we have to do. One in five houses in the city of DeKalb is underwater. You know what I mean? You know what underwater means? I know you, you guys do. It means their mortgage is higher than the value of their home. So one in five homes in the city of DeKalb, according to Zillow. And that is staggering statistic that we have to deal with. I'm not going to be a doomsayer. I'm trying to say we have to look at those problems, how we fix them and control it is the key. We can't, we can't say DeKalb's a bad place. It is a great place, it's going to take some work. But everybody's going to have to face it. So we're going to end up with a two-minute final thing of how you feel and what you want to do. We'll start with Carolyn.
I'll be very brief. I'm running unopposed. I want to serve you. I'm here to serve and I hope you'll be patient with me. Again, I'm Carolyn Morris, running for the first ward of DeKalb for city council. And I'm here to serve.
Having spent twelve years on the city council, three years as city clerk, I know how the city works. I have been willing to challenge what's presented to me by the staff and not just accept with a rubber stamp what they give me. I scrutinize, I have a reputation for scrutinizing what they put in front of me. And I have ticked off some staff members because of that, because I do question them. I remember campaigning and running into a, one of my constituents and, you know, I don't always agree with you, but I really appreciate that you stand up for what you believe in and you don't just accept what they give you. And that's, I think, a very important thing for the council to do because any staff is going to tend toward, any bureaucracy is going to tend toward the easiest route. And it's up to people on the council to challenge the staff to be at their best and not just take the easiest route.
I'm going to be brief because we've probably all been here for quite a while. I'm going to bring what I have, you know, working in the city for thirty-one years. I'm going to bring a lot of experience. I've been before council, I've been quizzed by council. I look at Dave because he was one of the only few that would ask me questions, which I appreciated before I got called on the carpet in front of council. So I'm going to bring that experience. I have a lot of experience in law enforcement, so, you know, that's my forte. Now I'm in public transit and as we all know, DeKalb's now the public transit provider or the contract holder for Husky Land as well. We are leveraging a large amount of FTA, Federal Transit Authority money. And I think it's critical that we start to improve our transit infrastructure within the city. Once we start moving people around, they can get where they need to go, people may want to come here. Look at some of our other cities. Look at Aurora, look at Naperville, they have huge transit infrastructures. You know, pace does a number. They move people around. If we get people to move to jobs, get them down to three M target, maybe they'll want to live here and not worry about, you know, hiring outside employment, you know, it seems to be the commonplace down in that area. So right up here, I committed this city, you know, I all but born here, was born in Aurora, lived here for all my life. You know, like I said, I've got a lot of experience with the people in the community, a lot of family in the community. Bessie, you talked about relationships, you named the school board, I mean, obviously the township, my brother's a township commissioner, the roads, you know, so, I mean, one of my fellow officers is a township commissioner in DeKalb. So I have a lot of contacts. Sycamore, the Corbin Mayor, Sycamore City Manager, you name it. These are people I've worked with over the years. So I bring a lot of contacts, if you will, to the position. Thank you. I think I want to tell a personal story about DeKalb. And one of the things that I love about DeKalb is that a couple of years ago, I had a stroke and my doctor suggested that I do a lot of walking. So one of the things I did was instead of driving to go get my groceries, I would walk to the grocery store. One day it was about ninety-five degrees out, particularly humid, and I had a lot of groceries. And I was walking home and it's about a two and a half mile walk. Someone stopped along the way to offer me a ride home. We all know that the city of DeKalb has great people and it has great potential. And we all have this sense that it could be a much better city. And what I want to do if I get elected is to help bring that to fruition. So I ask for your vote on April 2nd and I hope that we can make DeKalb into the city that we think it can be.
Thank you. I'll be extremely brief. I just want to say I do take seriously the stewardship and the taxpayers' money. I am always looking for, you know, the best value of the government. of the taxpayers' money. I am always looking for, you know, the best value that we're going to get, not just spending money, things like that. We do look for, I'm always looking for value in the question. So, just thank you for the honor of being here.
Well, I want to thank all of you for coming up and doing this. It's great for the audience to find out who these people are or what they stand for. I mean, this is a great experience for you guys. I know three of you, four of you are bringing you in this part. You get used to talking now. Wait till you become on the council. This is pittance compared to where you will be going. I want to thank the people who come out, and there's not a lot of you, but we have to understand that this is our city. And the only way we're going to fix it is we all work together. Whether it's an organization, whether it's the D A R A people, whether it's the downtown merchants, whether it's the chamber or the city council, we have to make an effort to make the change. It's not going to happen on its own. And we've got to learn from the past and we have to grow the future. Can DeKalb be good again? Yes, it can be. I don't want you to turn great because I'm the one to tie on some other political people. But can we be the positive town that we used to have? Yes, it can be. Can it be something we're proud of? Yes, it can be. And we need to bring it back to that. Because we have only one way to go right now. We've got to grow up. And we can't go backwards any further. Otherwise, we're economically not going to make it. I want to thank everybody. And I hope we all go out and we talk to other people because even in Chicago today, twenty-four percent of the people voted. You know, with seventeen candidates, twenty-four percent voted, how, the apathy is just rampant. And people in town, I always tell them, if you want to complain about something, step up and do something. Because you can't complain without making an effort. I do want to thank the wonderful people from the Chronicle who came today and gave up their dinnertime. And I think she was snacking back there. I didn't want to pin it too much. She was eating back there. I want to thank them for coming and helping cover. David Diggs, thank you for coming. And we will miss you on the city council, your voice of, I don't want to say wisdom, but your voice. We will miss you a lot. And you can take anything from this, folks. It's, this guy stood up for a lot of things. He believed in, sometimes he didn't believe, but he thought it was for the good of the people. So, thank you very much for coming out this evening. And this has been Telecast, so we'll be running it on one of the lines tomorrow, a couple of people. So, and Barry appears taking some audio. I want to thank you, Barry. Oh, one last thing. And I have to say this. Mayor Smith called me yesterday. He apologized. He could. He wanted to be here, but he had another meeting tonight. But he wanted to relay something very important. He wants all of you to call him. He wants to work with you. He wants to make sure there's great transparency. There's nothing going to be hidden so we can grow the city. So, please give him a call. Thank you very much and have a nice evening.